Right, good evening everybody. It's good to see you all here tonight. Just for the benefit of members of the public, in a case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately, following the green fire exit signs, out to the assembly point which is by the War Memorial in Duke Street. If you need assistance, let us know. Don't use the lifts. And remain at the assembly point and don't return to the building until you've been advised that it's safe to do so. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but it should be pointed out that only councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are pointed only in this direction. Please make sure that you've silenced or switched off your mobile phones. Thank you very much. Okay, so apologies?
Thank you Chair. I've had apologies from councillor Roberts and councillor Bentley sobbing for him, and also apologies from councillor Pooley.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then the minutes of the last meeting, does anybody have any comments? No? Take those as being correct. Thank you. Okay, I'm not aware that there are any public questions unless you've got a sudden burning ambition to raise one?
I have, Chair.
All right. Yes, okay. Yep, thank you. Written, and obviously you can see that obviously we do share some of your concerns. I don't know if an officer wants to respond at this stage?
I think it would probably be best to respond when we have the presentation, where we have the slides up. That would be a better chair, thank you. Thank you. So thank you, Mr Chair. So this item before you today is, I mean essentially the purpose of this report is to outline the draft impact report, which as a host authority, each one of those host authorities, which includes Braintree and Colchester and just a very, very small bit of Maldon, this scheme, the A12 widening scheme affects. And effectively this is a nationally significant infrastructure project in relation to the development consent order process. So this isn't an application that's being submitted to Chelmsford City Council, this is National Highways submitting this to the Planning Inspector through the development consent order. Now, members will be familiar, those that are on the committee that dealt with Longfield Solar Farm, so it's the same situation as Longfield in the sense that we as local authority and host authority have the opportunity to comment. So the report has a number of recommendations, which is on the first page, so I'm just going to go through, this first slide just sets out the extent of the A12 widening scheme. And effectively, as it says, it goes from Boreham, Boreham Interchange Junction 19, all the way up to the Markstay Junction of the A12. Now, it is a scheme, it's an over a billion pounds scheme that is being proposed by National Highways to effectively widen the whole of that route to three lane dual. And through that process, there has been some rationalisation of some of the junctions. Now, in terms of Chelmsford, the actual scope of those, I think 15 miles that you can see on the slide there is relatively small in the sense that the proposals are in that southwestern corner from Boreham Interchange Junction 19 up to our boundary, which is in between Boreham and Hatfield-Peverill. And the general proposal, as I said, is a nationally significant infrastructure project, and it follows those DCO processes. And as I said, it's the widening to three lanes, it's the bypasses of some junctions outside of our area, predominantly within Braintree and in Colchester. There's six new bridges for walkers, cyclists and horse riders. One of the things that we're told is that they want to, this is National Highways where you want to address the safety improvements. So that's one of the big factors in terms of this investment. It's not just about traffic flow, it's about making things safer. And then there's a whole host of associated works, as you can imagine, on a scheme of this scale. So what I wanted to focus on first of all is the southernmost area, and this is Junction 19. So on there, on the screen, you're probably, sorry, apologies that the tags are very small, but you'll see that effectively there are some proposals for Junction 19. Now, what's being proposed is in addition to the developers' proposals that are actually happening at the moment, so anyone that's driven through Junction 19 at the moment will know that there's lots happening at Junction 19, and that's predominantly, well, solely related to the Beaulieu development and the Radial Distributor Road. But what's actually going to, what's actually proposed as part of this development consent order is that there would be additional improvements to Boreham Interchange. I'm sorry, additional improvements to Boreham Interchange, and that would include the Boreham Bridge. So the bridge that goes across would be widened to allow additional flows, including its approaches and exits. There's a construction of a new signal control crossing. There's a construction of a new walking and cycling and horse bridge to the north east of the actual interchange that goes from Payne's Lane. And there's some signage improvements as well, and overhead gantry works and road surface improvements to the southbound carriageway. So effectively, what we've got here on Junction 19 is in addition to the works, as I say, that have been carried out by countryside properties in relation to Beaulieu. And I think I just wanted to put on, that's the drone footage of the junction about nine days ago. So you can see that quite a lot of the works have already happened on Boreham Interchange. And in the distance there, you probably, not sure you probably can see it, but you can see the bridge that actually over the last couple of nights has been slowly working its way across the railway line. And you can see that it's slowly, very slowly being shunted across the railway line there. And these are the, this is the Radial Distributor Road, this is the existing junction improvements as part of Beaulieu. So in terms of the general arrangement in terms of Boreham and Hatfield-Peverill, which I think is the points that Mr Martin, Mr Carl were picking up. The proposal is to close both northbound and southbound junctions, that's junctions 28 and 20B at Hatfield-Peverill. So for, just to get your orientation as you're going up towards Hatfield-Peverill, there's a left-hand lane which solely goes over and goes exits to Hatfield-Peverill. And likewise, coming southbound, there is a slip road, 28, that I refer to in relation to some of the southbound works in relation to a very short, it is quite a short slip road. And one of the reasons why effectively those are being closed in relation to National Highways position is that what they want to do is consolidate junctions into one place, and having at-grade junctions accessing all areas. So what is being proposed is that those two junctions are replaced with a new junction to the north east of Hatfield-Peverill. And that would be a junction that relates to all movements, both southbound and northbound. Apologies for this, it seems that it keeps on moving on on its own, and I'm not absolutely sure why it's doing that, but anyway, there we are. Maybe I'll be timed out. So, and also the mitigation that is being proposed at the moment, and rightly said by Mr Martin, was that there's a reduction in speed limit to 30 miles an hour. So the main issue here is that traffic come from Maldon, that comes on the Maldon Road at Hatfield-Peverill. At the moment, it turns left if it's coming, wants to get southbound onto the A12. Then it joins the A12 at Junction 28, which is a small southbound slip, and that avoids any traffic going through Boreham basically. With the removal of that junction, then we have a situation where traffic may well route all the way along Main Road and go to the Boreham Interchange that way. Because if you're coming from Maldon, it feels wrong to be going in the wrong direction, if that makes sense. You're going probably three quarters of a mile north east, and then to go back on yourself on the A12. And people are familiar with the route that they've taken for a while, and this is the point that we've been putting international highways for quite a significant amount of time. Going to move on to the next slide, because it keeps on wanting to go there. So the main issues, the key issues are, you know, the principle of development, the effect on Boreham, the residents and businesses of Boreham, the construction of that walking and cycling and horse bridge, and just making sure that we are ensuring that all these proposals are within the environmental impact regulations. So things like noise and air quality, all of those sorts of things need to be looked at. So in terms of the principle of development, I think it's probably widely known that the A12 is a really busy road. I think it's in, I think actually, it's one of the, one of the most, it's the worst performing, or within the 10% of the worst performing links of the A12 there, within the whole of the network of the East of England. And we've all probably experienced driving on the A12 when anything goes wrong, or even when, you know, at peak. There's significant issues in relation to capacity and flow. So I think in general terms, the improvements are welcomed. It's at capacity, and these proposals will lead to a reduction in congestion and reduce journey times. And without any improvements, we know that that congestion and that journey time issues are likely to worsen. So I think in principle, I don't think officers have an issue. I think the main problems that we have been facing is precisely the, what you've heard tonight from members of the public, is that we feel that in themselves, these proposals can be, could be quite potentially harmful to the residents of Boreham. And what we want to do is make sure that mitigation is targeted and isn't a standard mitigation, you know, speed limit. As Mr Martin pointed out, there needs to be a really comprehensive package of mitigation to ensure that we don't have a situation where traffic is rerouting through Boreham. So it may well be things like average speed cameras, they can be more effective than speed limits. We can have physical, you know, chicanes and barriers. There are a whole series of different packages that will deter people from turning left. Because if it takes longer and it's more, you know, more awkward, then people are less more likely to reroute and to change their travel patterns. In terms of Junction 19, we feel that the alterations are acceptable. But as we said, the closures of 28 and 20B are expected to lead to an increase in traffic through Boreham. The other thing that I just wanted to pick up on that is in the officer's report is that we really welcome the new bridge. I think we are probably not overly impressed with its design at the moment, quite utilitarian. And we feel that that bridge as an entranceway and an opportunity to link into the new business park, the new railway station, and all of the benefits that the garden community brings, we feel that that bridge should be designed in such a way to recognise all of those things that are happening around it, rather than being, you know, something you'd expect to see anywhere in the country. So we will be pushing hard to make sure that, you know, there's some, there's some changes in terms of that design. I'm not going to bother you too much with the environmental statement. There are many things that we need to undertake in terms of cultural, visual amenity, heritage, biodiversity, geology, noise and vibration. So we need to make sure that their environment statement is, you know, picking up all of those things, and we will be interrogating that more through the process. So the development consent order, as we said, it's a nationally significant infrastructure project. The process has to be determined by the Secretary of State. The host authorities and the interested and statutory parties have a status. We have a different status from other members of the public or other bodies, because we're a host authority. And what we do is we submit a local impact report. And that is what's appended as Appendix One of your report, our draft local impact report. Now, we don't, we have a bit of time before we have to finalise this, because the relevant representations run until the 4th of November. But what we want to do is, we want to ensure that we put on notice, National Highways, that we do have some issues in relation to some of the detail. And I think the main issue really is the effect on Boreham, is the thing that we really want to get right and make sure that that mitigation package is put in place. Now, I think one thing that I would like to say is that 28, one of the things that we have put to National Highways through the, probably the last three or four years, is whether there is an alternative to providing an all-movement junction to the north east of Hatfield-Peverill. The answers that we've had back so far is that that isn't possible. Purely mainly because of safety in relation to traffics turning right onto a slip road. That slip road at the moment, it would be, you know, a substandard slip road. It wouldn't be allowed within the existing constraints of the scheme. So that's what we're being told at the moment, that that's the reason why the DCO doesn't actually include those proposals. Now, I'm not actually sure why the screen has gone black. Just try and carry on talking while Daniel has a look at that. So what the next steps are, yes, so the next steps are, we have a preliminary meeting on the examination likely in December, January. We think the examination will start, potentially, the examination process will start at the beginning of next year. But the actual submissions and hearings are likely to be later on in the year. But I think what we would like to do is to get that submission of that local impact report in as quickly as we can with your approval. And obviously, the detail of that is delegated to the Director and the Cabinet Member for Sustainable Development. And the scheduled decision on this is likely to be towards the end of next year. Thank you for your patience. In terms of some of the technology, they're not quite going quite to plan. But I'm hoping that the recommendations that are put forward on the beginning of the report sets out what officers' proposals are, the draft impact report is appended at Appendix One. And I'll go back to you, Chair, for discussion.
Thank you very much, Councillor Massey.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Mr Potter. Further to what the gentleman said earlier, I was going through, and it did trigger something that I do recall reading. And actually, 7.4 in the appendix does say explicitly, what is required is a package of measures to make the route unattractive and to encourage users to use the new junction. So we have got it in there, if you want to make that sentence maybe more forceful, like extremely unattractive, I don't know. But it has been picked up already, so we're on, I think we're on the game there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's sufficient?
Thank you Chair. I could ask a couple of questions round about the Junction 19. Is the three lanes actually going to go through Junction 19, which is extremely busy? And then as you come on, which I frequently do, because my father lives in Boreham. In fact, perhaps just in case anyone doubts, his house backs onto Main Road. He is coming up to 101, so I don't think he'll care very much about this. So, yeah, you have Junction 19, and then, I mean, one of the eccentricities, I support the widening of that piece, but of course, the A12 bypass around Chelmsford is two-lane, and it's not only the A12, it's the A130 or the A414 as well. So I don't know about the traffic numbers, but it can grind to a halt. So I don't know, it may improve the congestion through the stretch that's improved, only to snarl up around Chelmsford. The other question that I'd like to, and it relates to Junction 19, the north east bypass, will that come in as a separate entity into this Boreham Junction 19? And, well, if it does, and it looks as though they'll be building one thing, I mean, they've had three bites at this Junction 19, the one, the work of the developer. If they're doing the north east bypass, then there'll be another bite, and then this, or whichever, maybe the other way around. Thank you.
So first of all, Junction 19, there is no proposals to make it three-lane to the south of Junction 19. It's all, it's three-lane to the north east of Junction 19. It will stop, actually, yeah, as the slips come on going northbound, it will go onto three lanes, but going southbound, it will go from three to two. And I share your surprise at the fact that the Chelmsford bypass wasn't included in the proposals in the first place. But I'm afraid we've made that point on a number of occasions in National Highways, but this is the scheme that they've submitted. In terms of the Chelmsford north east bypass, so the first, the phase of the bypass... In terms of the Chelmsford north-east bypass, so the first, the phase of the bypass that is funded doesn't actually connect on to the A12, it connects on to the Radial Distributor Road, the road that's going around Bealey, the bridge that I showed you the photos is the last missing part of that. So at this point in time, there aren't any further proposals for dueling the whole of the Chelmsford north-east bypass. So the Junction 19 would need to change if in the future there was a full duel of the Junction 19, connecting the A12 with the A130, or the A131 as it will be in terms of the Chelmsford north-east bypass. So I think that is, future that is unknown at the moment, I'm afraid, Councilor Sotin.
An additional question, which the government has proposed fast-tracking certain highways. You mentioned the timetables there. I guess you can't know, but I guess it's conceivable that this, that process could be fast-tracked if the government wishes to go in that direction.
I mean, at this point in time, no, I don't know, I'm afraid.
Castle Willis.
Thank you, Chairman. I fully follow what's being said in the junctions in Hatfield-Peverill and along towards Boreham, with which I have in the past been quite familiar. I'm conscious that at the same time, there has been an issue that every now and again, somebody has managed to ignore all the signs and in crossing over the A12 or approaching on the road that would take you over the A12, they have insisted on turning right, or rather, because they've been on another road, they'd carry straight on and come down onto the left-hand carriageway of the A12, but driving in the wrong direction. I take it that these changes will make that quite impossible.
I mean, obviously, driver behaviour is quite, how can I put it? You know, the design of it will be designed in such a way to minimise that and obviously signage as well. But I mean, I couldn't say impossible because it's down to each driver.
You'd have to close it off, wouldn't you? And you can't do that because you've got to allow traffic to come off the...
That's right, yeah. But I mean, the design would be at a standard to ensure that that is minimised and also signage, making sure that signage minimises that impact.
Okay, thank you. That's Wyeth.
Thank you. I mean, I guess there's nobody here who disagrees with what we're going to say anyway. We entirely support what's said there. You haven't entirely clarified my understanding, anyway, of the need to build a new junction at all, because we have junctions that are not, apart from odd things, problems in life at the moment. I mean, where you go up and down the road, those are the two junctions that don't cause any problems, really. It's the Boreham interchange clearly has always been the one. Can we not suggest to the government they can save money here by not building a new one and carry on with two existing ones which aren't a problem? Because it's only 2042 or something, they become a problem. So why don't they save money now and not build a junction that nobody wants? And why don't we say that in our comments?
I mean, that is up for members to, obviously, if that is the feeling of the board. I mean, what's been put to us is that through the process of changing all of these highways, what we've got to remember is that the A12 is a combination of changes that have happened over the last, you know, 50 years, all at different standards, all at different times. And because of that, it is a real hotchpotch of design and safety. Now, the main driving reason behind changing a moving 20A in particular is safety. And the modelling that accompanies the proposals, the DCO, seeks to say that effectively having one junction is better in flow and capacity and safety terms. And that's the reason why that's been proposed through the DCO. So, I mean, we can look at that in more detail in relation to that decision-making, but I think I would just say to members that I would suggest that it's unlikely that National Highways would change their proposals because of those predominantly safety factors that they're quoting back to us.
Are there any accident statistics to prove all of this then? Have we seen any of those? Because, again, there appears to be a lack of background, which presumably you've seen. I don't think members want to see piles of paper like that either, but nonetheless, if it's a safety problem, there should be statistics to show. It's like putting in crossings, they only put them in after people have been killed on them, don't they? We know that over years. Are there statistics to back this up?
There are safety statistics. I mean, the slip road is substandard, it's too short and at peak and at times of congestion, you know, there has been accidents on that slip. In terms of how bad that slip is in relation to the number of accidents, that's a judgement that, you know, National Highways as the kind of, as the body that's looking after the trunk road system have to call. But, I mean, the widening process is an opportunity to, along that stretch, is to get everything up to standard. That's what National Highways are proposing, is not to leave substandard junctions on the network.
I comment on that junction. If you come out of Hatfield-Peverill at the moment, you come in on that very slot slip road, but you come into the third lane, which is an additional lane. If they widen it through Hatfield-Peverill to three lanes, you will have only that minimal slip road to come into a fast third lane. Clearly, that's a problem. There might be other solutions to it, but that clearly is a problem, which you don't have at the moment because you have a new third lane to go into at the moment from the very short slip road. I can see people raising that question as a problem.
I mean, as I said, the proposals are proposals that are going through the sort of national safety audit process, and therefore all the proposals will be seeking to improve safety from the existing road. And as I say, is to make sure that there's a consistent approach on that whole stretch. So they are the proposals of National Highways. We, as host authority, can make our comments to those, and that's the reason why this report is in front of you tonight.
Well, hang on, one moment. I think they're still discussing, but...
Yeah.
Castle Walsh.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it's a bit kind of disappointing, really, that there's currently work on Junction 19, this, and then there'll be the north-east bypass. And it's all in one area of the city, that, you know, we've got a lot of commuter traffic coming down through for quite an extended period of time now, that if there was any way any of those developments could be, as Councilor Sotin mentioned, either fast-tracked or combined together.
Thank you. Thank you, Castle Walsh. So our starting point was, we were encouraging National Highways to do all the work to the junction in one hit. And we went through a number of meetings with them. Unfortunately, the stars didn't align to allow the timetaping of that to happen. So countryside properties wanted to get on with their junction, because of course, they have a planning permission that restricts, they need to open that road. So National Highways unfortunately missed that opportunity. Luckily, the junction improvements to Junction 19 don't actually mean that you've got to dig up anything that's actually just been put in, which was our fear, that as part of the countryside proposals, that would seem totally perverse, that in two, three years' time after that junction's open, to knock down something that's just been built. Luckily, what they've tried, well, what they are proposing and what they feel works on Junction 19 is complementary to the existing Junction 19 improvements by the developer. And therefore, the impact of that is going to be lessened, I would say. We will always look for ways in which we can try and combine for all sorts of different reasons, but unfortunately, sometimes when you're looking at different projects being proposed by different bodies for different reasons, trying to corral all of those into doing the sensible thing, that you're absolutely right, sometimes can be quite tricky. But we will continue to make sure that we look at things holistically and make sure that we try and encourage them to do so.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Well, yes, well, I guess what we're saying to our officers is, you know, to seek to come up with creative ways of dealing. I mean, I would have thought that Junction 28 could be changed, you know, if you change the priority and use traffic lights, there must be a way of improving Junction 28 to get traffic directly on to the A12 and then use traffic lights for the local traffic. There must be options there. But, yeah, but members happy that officers will have our full backing to minimise the...
Very brief second bite at the cherry, just for information. According to Essex County Council, Junction 7A of the M11, which was recently completed, costs around 78 million. That gives you an order of magnitude in terms of councillor Whitehead's savings.
Yep.
We can make those points. What we need to realise is that at some point, through the examination process, we will need to provide evidence to an inspector, and we need to make sure that that evidence is robust. So I just would caveat any changes with that statement. Thanks.
Chair, shall I make the...
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, so we have the two recommendations. We have considered the draft local impact report and recommend to the Director of Sustainable Communities in consultation with the Cabinet Member for Sustainable, finalise the local impact report, enable it to be submitted to the Planning Inspectorate by some date or other. And secondly, to authorise the Director of Sustainable Communities and its appointed officers to engage within and respond on behalf of Chelmsford City Council on all matters relating to the examination and subsequently thereafter. So I propose that.
Thank you. Seconded, Chair. Thank you. Members, happy with that recommendation? Yes. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Jeremy. Okay, we go back then to the cathedral matter. There's Michael, are you leading? Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Good evening. So the background for this enhancement plan, the starting point really was the issues with pedestrianisation of Tyndall Square, which closes off the existing laybys on Tyndall Square, which the cathedral have historically enjoyed using for servicing the cathedral, particularly for hurries on days of funerals. Yeah, so Tyndall Square closes effectively as part of the pedestrianisation scheme, which loses the service laybys on Tyndall Square. So that's a key driver for this project. Secondly, it's to allow for coordinated management of the churchyard as part of a master plan. It delivers the enhancement of a key city centre public space, and it's the obvious kind of next step on from the Tyndall Square project, and it satisfies the council's duties to enhance the conservation area. So the cathedral itself was obviously built as a parish church, a Mary's parish church. It was largely rebuilt in the early 15th century, replacing an 11th century church. As you can see on the 1591 Walker map on the top left, the appearance of the church and the shape of the churchyard is largely the same today. Historically, the churchyard was crammed full of monuments and tombs and largely enclosed by railings, and that character has been drastically changed from the 1970s, when the churchyard was largely cleared of most of its monuments. And the character of it today is much more dominated by trees, as you can see from the recent aerial image bottom right. So the cathedral became, from the parish church, the cathedral in 1914, when the diocese was reorganised. So it's actually the second smallest cathedral in the country, but it occupies the second largest diocese in the country. So the study area is, takes in the churchyard itself and the main spaces and approaches around the churchyard, largely defined by the building frontages and the main approaches from Duke Street and Tyndall Square and parts of Leg Street. It forms part of the setting to the Grade One listed cathedral and a number of other listed buildings around the churchyard, including Shire Hall. It's within the central conservation area, and it's crossed by a number of public footpaths. And as a closed churchyard, it's maintained by Chelmsford City Council. And arguably, it's the most attractive and historic place within the city centre. So the churchyard currently fulfils a number of functions, obviously for religious ceremonies, but also a busy fire affair through to the city centre, for graduation ceremonies and other events, as public gardens, and quite importantly, as a public park, particularly in the summer months. So some of the current issues, I mean, the sort of would-be visitor arriving at Chelmsford Station and taking a trip along Duke Street and then arriving at the cathedral is granted with the site on the top left, so it's cluttered with signage and not particularly pleasing street furniture and tarmac surfaces. So it could be one, you know, a great approach to the cathedral, but at the moment, it doesn't really give a very befitting setting and approach to the cathedral itself. There's a number of areas where there's poor quality paving and oversized trees, and on the key approach to the south porch, there's exposed bins and backs of buildings on the area just off of Duke Street. There's a number of routes across the churchyard which are well-trodden, which are not paved at the moment, so it's kind of churned up and muddy. There's an access at the south-east corner towards Waterloo Lane that's down some fairly narrow, steep steps. And centrally along New Street, there's a very narrow and dangerous pedestrian access with steps directly into the roadway. There's a very limited external public space at present, so there's a small widening of the paving adjacent to the south entrance, but other than that, there's no real public space within the churchyard. There's a very narrow vehicle access off of Church Lane, which is too narrow to fit a hearse. And then on the image on the right-hand side, circled in green, is the laybys that are closed off as part of the Tyndall Square scheme. So most of the cathedral has fairly poor quality paving materials, so in the main it's tarmac and concrete slabs. There's a mixture of poor quality street furniture that's been added, kind of ad hoc over time, so nothing matches, and there's some inappropriate planting of these kind of palm trees dotted around the edge of the churchyard. And there's areas where some of the fairly unattractive backs of buildings on Duke Street are exposed in key views, and then there's some more attractive buildings which are screened. So we've been working in partnership with the cathedral, and we appointed Wim Williams Associates Landscape Architects to prepare a study for the cathedral precinct area. And we undertook a series of stakeholder workshops to inform the concept proposals. So this is the concept plan. So that proposes infrequent vehicle access off of New Street via Church Street, which would be controlled by bollards. The dangerous access on to New Street is closed off. There's an improved access at the south-east corner towards Waterloo Lane, and there's a series of new... a series of new public spaces to the south-west and east of the cathedral, and also on just off of Duke Street on the main approach to the cathedral. There's improved cycle parking, there's new footpaths on the desire lines across the churchyard, and improved paving and street furniture, and a new landscaping scheme and tree planting. So this is the plan, which largely introduces yorkstone in the key public spaces and bound gravel footpaths elsewhere, a much simpler landscaping scheme, taking out all of the non-native planting, and really keeping it quite simple, so the cathedral is the main focus of the churchyard. So in terms of the next steps, the plan is to undertake a further series of stakeholder workshops, including the cathedral authorities, Essex Highways and Historic England, undertake some public consultation work, and then progress with a detailed design, and then use that detailed design to apply for a faculty, which is, it's a bit like a planning permission, it's part of the Church of England approval process, and then use that detailed design to seek funding and inform few to maintenance and management proposals, and then hopefully, once funding is achieved, to commence the scheme, either in its entirety or in phases. So the recommendation this evening is that the policy board endorse the plan and delegate authority to the Director of Sustainable Communities in consultation with cabinet members to progress with the detailed design. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Walsh?
Hi. Yeah, I think probably when most people are reading the report and see the removal of trees, is there a proposal to plant a native tree in replacing some of the trees that would be removed as part of this?
Yes, there is, part of the scheme is to remove some trees, particularly, there's some large conifer trees at the back of Shire Hall, which are quite a dominant feature in the churchyard, and there's some other sort of non-native species that would be removed. There's some conifer trees up just behind the chancel. So as you can see on this, the landscaping plan on the scheme, there are, the dark green trees are basically the new planting, so the idea is to take out all the inappropriate trees and put back native trees, and definitely put back more trees than there are now. So, yeah, there would definitely be a net increase in tree planting.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
So further points about the trees, the, I am concerned about the removal of the trees, even if they are dominant, and, I mean, I've been experienced with a lot of your Chelmsford planting trees which have died in the extreme weather of this year, and you remove the trees and they die. You talked about removing a palm tree, you might have to consider that as the kind of tree we might need, and perhaps some olive trees, rather than, if you were to plant these areas in here, and they all fail due to extreme weather, when you're having had removed the established trees, because they have a better chance of surviving. The, I don't know, the first, they're more adapted to northern European than southern European climes, but I think one should bear that in mind as you progress your designs this, and consider that, I'm afraid we might have to move away from what are now native trees to trees from southern Europe. We may do, I mean, as you develop, other things might happen, but that's just a concern that came to my mind.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I mean, it's definitely a good point. The, I mean, the new landscaping would be designed to take account of future climate change. I suppose we're, and we're fortunate in that the churchyard is maintained by the city council, so we've got a very good track record of maintaining the flowerbed and everything else there, so it's something that would be kind of maintained in-house, but it's definitely something we would have to consider carefully in the detailed design.
Councillor Nutt?
Thank you. What is the probable cost? Where does the money come from? And is the church contributing anything?
Just ask my... The most important question. Certainly, it's a partnership with the cathedral, so today, all the design work has been funded 50/50 with the cathedral and the city council, so going forward, it would definitely still be a partnership arrangement. We had the initial concept design costed by a quantity surveyor in February of this year, and at that time, it was circa 600,000. Obviously, the way things are going, that figure has almost certainly increased quite substantially. But I think, I mean, the recommendation tonight is not to require any funding. The idea is when we've got a detailed design, that will allow us to fundraise, and working in partnership with the cathedral, because they're a charity, that opens up various other doors for funding opportunities that will be open to us.
Thank you for the presentation. I think there have been some issues, I think I'm right in saying there's been issues in the past with rough sleeping on some of the benches around in the cathedral grounds, and I, looking from, looking at the report, it didn't look as though the proposed benches were sort of anti-sleep at all. So will there be some thought there in terms of trying to avoid that as an issue in the future? Thank you.
Yes, I mean, historically, that has been an issue within the churchyard. There were a number of benches on the northern side of the churchyard that were removed a few years ago because of that issue. So the plan is to sort of position the benches and have a bench of a suitable design to try and minimise any issues of that nature, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chair, I'll make the recommendations then. The policy board endorsed the cathedral precinct enhancement plan, and the policy board delegate to the Director of Sustainable Communities in a consultation with cabinet members for sustainable development and greener Chelmsford responsibility to progress with a detailed design of this scheme. I propose that.
Councillor Wallace?
Thank you, Chairman. Very briefly, and not to set aside in any way the motion that's just been agreed, but in the paper, there is excellent reference to the cathedral as a cultural centre, and the summary that was presented tonight omitted that. And I think it's an important function of the cathedral. It mentioned graduation ceremonies, and yes, indeed, there are some, mostly in the summer months, but events take place throughout the year, concerts of all kinds, and a whole variety of other events. It's a very, very well-used space, and I think we need to keep that in mind in terms of the access arrangements and so on. Thank you.
Did you want to second the recommendation, or?
Yes.
Okay, members happy with the recommendation? Thank you. Okay, so it comes to the work programme. Did you want to say anything?
Only just to point out that our next meeting is not until the 3rd of November. At the moment, we have a single item, which is Chancellor Garden Community Development Framework document. At this point in time, we're working very hard to ensure that that gets to the committee or the board, sorry, but I suppose I just need to preface that with the fact that we also have a master plan for great leas happening at the same time. So we're only going to want to have one master plan on a meeting, so it, I'm just sort of flagging up that it could well be slightly swapped if one gets to a further point than the other, but at this point in time, I don't know what that outcome will be. So it was just to flag that up. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Soshin?
Yeah, Chair, I think many members of the public would like to see a, as soon as possible, a scheduled date for the review of the adopted local plan, integrated impact assessment, issues and options, consultation. So if, I appreciate you, the officers have just said the big workload of the two items just mentioned and other items, but if they get an idea, people will ask me questions, you know, when it might happen.
So, I mean, the first stage of that is actually programmed in January on the work programme, so it's the strategic housing and employment land availability assessment. So the first thing this board will be looking at is all of those submissions in terms of land, and then also in terms of the standing item underneath, there is reference to the review of the adopted plan, and we will schedule in meeting dates in the new year for the consideration of the local plan. So, but at this stage, obviously, we extended the plan consultation until the 20th of October. We've got to look at all of the representations that will be submitted to us, analyse those to get those ahead before you, to ensure that you've got full visibility of what people were saying, so that's the situation at the moment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, any urgent business? Okay, thank you, members. Enjoy the rest of your evening.